Alright, hey everybody. Thank you guys for hanging in there with me. It's been uh been having some technical issues. Can you guys hear me? Can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? Justine, alright. Maida, welcome back. Peter, Karen, alright guys, welcome back. Victor Palacios, Jocelyn. Alright, I see a lot of students here. And so guys, today I want to talk to you guys. Um, this is gonna be a different kind of session. And I'm gonna have a guest uh with me today, my old colleague and friend, uh Ms. Kim. From Bright Star Secondary, um Charter Academy. So what's better than having one, a push teacher, having two? And we're here just to answer your questions, to talk to you guys about um about all the things that are going on. And uh, you know, I saw that you guys were talking about a rapper. I'm not a rapper, guys. Uh, so I I don't rap, but maybe I'll try at the end. But I do tell jokes. What did the ocean say to the sand? Oh no, how did the ocean say hi to the sand? Aw, Perla, you got it. Alright, there you go. See, those are some good jokes. Alright. So today, I'm gonna bring in Mrs. Kim. Uh, so Ms. Kim, I'm gonna send you an invitation and just please accept. And then we'll we'll answer everybody's questions. If you guys have a specific question, you can go to ask question. Here at the bottom and put your question there. Uh, Ms. Kim, is it okay if we enable your camera?
I didn't want to.
Hey, Ms. Kim.
Hi, everyone. Good, how are you?
Oh, good. Hey, thank you so much for joining me on the stream tonight. How are you doing?
I'm good. I'm tired because I did not sleep last night. I'm also going to school this semester and I took my exam last night. Um, part one at CSUN and uh it was a lot of anxiety um to finish that in the two hour block I had.
So, so you just went through a testing in a in a specific amount of time. And so this is what our students uh are going to uh go through here in the AP exam. So what advice would you give them?
It's funny, like for me, I had a lot of anxiety right before the exam. Um, even though I'm a teacher, like always, I'm a student out hard and I always get anxious when there's a test. Uh, but once the test began, um I lost my anxiety and I knew, like, I've done so many assignments where I practiced for the test, like similar things. And once the assignment came out, the test came, I was like, oh, this is like a uh written response number two that we did in class. And like, I already knew what I was doing. And I finished it with ten minutes to spare. Um, so I was pretty happy about that. I'm also like all the stuff that you learn in your class, like the small essay cues, the quick writes. You know, those those DBQ practices with thesis writing, whatever your teacher has done. It's the same exact thing. So don't panic when you go to your test. Um, on May, was it fifteenth or fourteenth?
Yeah, fifteen, yeah. We're gonna talk about all that, give definitely give some tips, but definitely that experience you went through is is will be very helpful here. So Ms. Kim, basically what we're gonna do is we're just gonna kind of uh go over uh go over some things and then answer some student questions. Uh, I by no means have every answer, so it might come that we might have to look something up together. But the idea is to give you guys the best information and to prepare you guys in the stream. Um, I truly appreciate all the students. I want to give a shout out to all Ms. Kim's students that are joining us. And all those other students that are joining us from everywhere else. Um, if you guys can put what city and state you're from or you're joining us, that would be great to see in the chat so we can know where everybody's from. Uh, Perla, T.Jest, uh Sierra's from Texas. And these are students that come in all at different times. So T.Jest is from Tennessee. Alright, so uh real quick, before we jump in, Ms. Kim, I want to really quick talk about uh Fiveable is free for all students. And every Thursday at nine PM uh Eastern Time, they offer a free stream for all students. And they have different topics. So tomorrow they'll be offering a free stream. Um, the reason we're doing this one in the middle of the day is because Fiveable knows that we have about one month left. Uh, before the AP exam and we and they want to offer as many sessions for students to interact. So this is what this session is about. So. Perla, yes, we have one month until the AP exam. Now, if you guys don't follow, if you have social media, uh Twitter, Instagram, or YouTube, please be sure to follow Think Fiveable on there. Um, my favorite is uh my favorite is Twitter. Sorry, guys, I'm gonna call. My favorite is Twitter. And so I I get a lot of information. They post a lot of free resources. So it's a lot of good stuff. So, before we start, I want to go over uh some of the changes to the AP exam because these things have been happening as we speak. Uh, the coronavirus has forced a lot of students to go, uh a lot of schools, maybe. I would say ninety percent of the schools in the United States and around the world to go to a remote site or uh to go to distance learning. So that means that. There isn't gonna be the traditional test at the school. And so the AP has had to adjust to that. And we're gonna talk about that for you guys today. I want to talk a little bit about a rubric that you guys can know and 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 you say, well, how do I know how it's gonna be scored? And we're gonna talk about that. I used to be an AP uh grader for three years. And so I'll definitely tell you guys some tips on that. And then, just like Ms. Kim was talking about, uh some tips to make sure you you're prepared. And then we're gonna take all the questions. And so. Uh, before we start, the test is on May uh Friday, May fifteenth, which is a Friday. And it's gonna be in the morning session. Uh, there are some June dates, but those are for makeups. Uh, teachers will get their student responses two weeks after the test, which is amazing. So Ms. Kim, you'll be able to see how your students wrote two weeks.
I know, it's so fast.
Usually it takes, what, like two months, right? We usually get it once in like July. And if students, if you need any accommodation, you just have to reach out to your teacher or to the AP. And they'll make sure you have extended time, okay? Why? Uh, yeah, the scoring is gonna be happening pretty quickly this year. Uh. Uh, Perla, so I think that's one of the positives. Usually it takes two, two months. This year, I think they're gonna do it in two weeks. Because it's only one question that they're going to to do. So. The question, the big thing is that the college colleges are still gonna accept your scores. And so a score of a three or four or five means that you will receive college credit. Uh, before the AP made these changes, that was their big thing because there's no point of taking an AP class. If you don't get college credit. So you will be able to, uh colleges will accept the score of three, four, and five. Uh, the test will be open book and note. That means you will have your resources. But I don't want you guys to get too confident in that. And Ms. Kim and I will talk about that later on because. If you say, well, I'm not gonna study, I'm just gonna have all my books spread out, ready to go, you're gonna panic and you're gonna see that it's only forty-five minutes to write a DBQ. Um, students can handwrite essays and upload a picture of it. So there's gonna be different ways to turn it in. Uh, one of the big things is that they're going to be really strict on plagiarism. So if you're copying words uh or sentences from a book, uh you might get your scored, your score disqualified. So it's the best practice is to put everything in your own words, okay? Don't copy, uh don't start quoting books, just do it all in your own words, okay? And students will need to time themselves. That means when you take the test, you will have to have a timer next to you. Because your time, um you have to submit the time and uh or or else it won't be counted. Alright, so I know that's really small, Ms. Kim. Can you see that or not really?
Um, if, oh, yeah, it's kinda small.
Ah, okay, Sierra has a question. If she's homeschooled, will her parents get a copy? That's a good question. Sierra, um my question for you would be, are you gonna take it through a school? Um, or how how do you sign up for the AP? That's that's a really good question. I I don't have an answer to that one. But I will put that in there and maybe somebody can answer that question for Sierra. So, so guys, the test is going to be modified this year. It's one question and it's forty-five minutes. This one question is one hundred percent of the exam. Um, and it's going to be a document-based question with five historical sources. So if you're listening to the stream right now and and what I would recommend is that you just take notes so you can go through this. Now, um, the AP is expecting students to use two of the five sources. Which is amazing. And you get points for using two of the five sources. And we're gonna talk a little bit about that. But you are going, it's a document-based question and there's five documents and you have to use two. Um, the rubric that I'll share with you guys in a second uh comes from the AP. It's modified from the AP. Um, and the AP is only gonna cover periods three to seven. So Ms. Kim, when you finished off with your students, where were you guys at?
Uh, we were at World War One, like the end of World War One.
Okay, so you were right there in period seven. I mean, at the beginning of period seven. So the good news is that it's only gonna cover periods three to seven. Uh, because a lot of teachers didn't have, like you did, uh you didn't have time to get to periods eight and nine. Um, and they're going, they're not gonna ask questions from one to two. So let's look at what period three uh through seven covers. So period three to seven uh really starts seventeen fifty-four to nineteen forty-five. And so this is going to cover one hundred percent of the exam. One of the things that's useful for me, it's to know why they chose these specific dates to begin and end. And so let's do a little exercise of why. Um, and this is something that you can definitely write out because if you know why they chose this date. As the demarcation line for for this period, it kinda helps you when you're organizing it. Um, exactly, Perla. Perla says it's the Seven Years' War and uh World War Two. Those are the beginning and the end dates. So that is very important that you know that the anything that happened. Uh, after the Seven Years' War or the French and Indian War, all the way to World War Two. So if you find yourself talking about the Civil Rights Movement, you've probably gone the wrong direction. If you're talking about Ronald Reagan or the Pocahontas, uh you've probably gone in the wrong direction. So. You you, it's good to know those time periods because it will help you uh during that. So. Let's focus on this and not to put you on the spot, Ms. Kim. It's just, we're gonna talk about it. But do you, uh, what, why do they, wh- what, what period, uh seventeen fifty-four and eighteen hundred, what are the, why did they choose this? Why do you think the AP chose this?
Uh, because what led to the American Revolution and the founding of our principles? And then to the election of eighteen hundred, it ends there because I think that's like the first chunk. Um, I don't know. And also think it's also a great way to see the changes and continuity, well, overall, but period three, I think. Starts off with the actual American history because I think before that is like pre-American, well, kind of pre-American. So I think they're not gonna focus too much on it. And they want something where it's like all from all real US history to us, where people, most people ended.
Okay, perfect, yeah. And I I was kinda just looking at it. And I didn't put, need to put you on the spot. It's just a conversation. Uh, seventeen fifty-four is the start of the French and Indian War. So that's an important date. And you said it, Ms. Kim, eighteen hundred is really the election of eighteen hundred. Which saw the shift of power from uh the Federalists to the Democratic Republicans. And so that's a a big important point. So you have seventeen fifty-four, which is the start of the French and Indian War to eighteen hundred, which is the first time in a in our history that we switched parties. Uh, from Democratic Republican to to, I'm sorry, from Federalist to Democratic Republican. And that's the start of Thomas Jefferson's uh presidency. So guys, real quick on the chat, what what things would be, could you talk about in this period three? So what could be included? I put there the American Revolution, which Ms. Kim said, the Constitutional Convention. What other events happened during this period? That you would say, okay, we're talking about period three. What other things happened? The Farewell Address, perfect. Well, Perla and and the Enlightenment. Angela, that's a good, the Enlightenment actually comes before that. The Articles of Confederation, perfect. The First Continental Congress. But Angela, I think what you meant is that the Enlightenment influenced the Constitution. So that that you can talk about. The Midnight Judges, uh Midnight Judges was with John Adams, okay, yeah. Uh, you can also, the Treaty of Paris, the Declaration of Independence, correct. The Boston Massacre. Any other events you can think of, Ms. Kim, that are during this time that they haven't mentioned? Oh, T.Jest, you got it. The Northwest Ordinance and the Ordinance of seventeen eighty-seven, good. The Hartford, Thomas Paine. Okay, awesome. Oh, man, look at it. Ms. Kim, look at all these awesome answers in the in the chat. These these guys.
I know.
They have it. They're awesome. They're ready to go. Peter, the Annapolis Convention. Can you expand on that, Peter, just in case somebody doesn't know what the Annapolis Convention was, where that fits? Republican motherhood, the concept of Republican motherhood. So if I were you guys and I were a student, I'd be writing this down. We're just period three and here are all the topics that can go. I am gonna share a resource with you guys today, uh that's free and will help you study. So let's look at period four. So period four, we did start off with eighteen hundred, which is the election of Thomas Jefferson. And I want to see, why do we end in eighteen forty-eight? I don't know, Ms. Kim, if you want to take a guess or you want to give the students a chance, what do you think?
Well, I know the answer, but.
Put you on the spot.
I'm like, you want me to just, do you want me to just, okay, well, I'll just say it. Well, the answer, well, should I get the students?
So they're saying the Mexican-American War.
It's the end of American, um, the Western frontier when we accomplish um dominating and building and expanding our territory, right? Um, and if you look at from eighteen hundred, eighteen forty, within those forty-eight years, we grow westward. We also changed socially, economically. Politically, you see a lot of things going on um in those forty-eight years. Just like with all the stuff you're saying, Mexican-American War, right, the gold rush, manifest destiny.
So definitely the Mexican-American War is a good uh point for that, uh just like you were saying, manifest destiny. Uh, gold is actually found in Sudders Mill in eighteen forty-eight. Um, and so maybe that point is the start of the gold rush. Which is going to lead to that. Um, alright, so just like we did, so what other events could be included in period four? Go ahead and write these down, guys. And Ms. Kim and I will look at them here in this chat and give you guys some shout outs. So. T.Jest, the Louisiana Purchase, the Market Revolution, the Missouri Compromise.
Ooh, War of eighteen twelve.
The War of eighteen twelve, correct. The Monroe Doctrine. Andrew Jackson's presidency is a big uh, a big topic for sure.
Yeah, the government grows so much during this time, too.
Yeah, so period, period four is probably going to be a really important period here uh for the AP exam, you know? The Gadsden Purchase, the Indian Removal Act, yeah, all these things, perfect. Awesome. Second Great Awakening, the growing sectionalism, yeah? I always used to like to say to my students, alright, guys, we're gonna talk about sex-ionalism.
Oh, God.
And that always got their attention. Alright, so let's do period five. T.Jest, that's good xenophobia, but remember you have to give specific examples um of of xenophobia, but excellent use of a word. So period five starts eighteen forty-four. Does anybody know why eighteen forty-four? I was actually trying. Ah, Sierra, you got it, yeah. Eighteen forty-four is the election of Polk. Uh, President Polk, who is really one of these presidents that is known to be a leader in manifest destiny. Um, he he is going to promote the gold rush and so on. So it is, why do we end in eighteen seventy-seven? Silence, radio. Alright, T.Jest, you got it, correct. It's the end of Reconstruction. Good job, guys. Ms. Kim's students, I want to make sure you guys are participating too, alright? You guys are doing great here. And let's make sure everybody's participating. So, correct. So this begins with the election of of James Polk and it ends with Reconstruction. And so period five really covers this period of uh right around a couple major events. So let's go through this. What major events could be talked about in period five? Go ahead and write those. Compromise of eighteen fifty, the Civil War, good job, Anna.
Well, even though it's not eighteen forty-four, like it happened before that, I think it's also good to lead to the failures of the compromises that led to the growing tension.
Correct. Uh, the Kansas-Nebraska Act was eighteen fifty-four. So definitely it's those failures that led into uh the eighteen fifty-four. Andrew Jackson, Andrew Johnson's impeachment, grants, the Civil War, great. Alright, we're almost done, guys. Now, how about this period six, eighteen sixty-five to eighteen ninety-eight? I actually couldn't find, uh, Ms. Kim, I'll be honest, I I couldn't really figure out why eighteen ninety-eight.
Neither did I, but I kinda thought it ended um with before the election of McKinley, no?
Yeah, I I thought uh McKinley was elected eighteen ninety-six.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so it's like right in the middle of his term. I don't know what significant event occurred in eighteen ninety. I mean, I'm sure there's something. But if anybody has any idea, what, why, what's the eighteen sixty-five? What is that date, guys? Okay, Brian, you got it. It's the Civil War. Eighteen sixty-five is the end of the Civil War and it goes up to eighteen ninety-eight. If anybody can help us figure this out.
Is it the, is it because of the um Spanish-American War?
Oh, you're correct. Yes.
Because um that would mean that we actually become a global power now internationally because that's when we actually first defeat. Someone and it's like, oh, okay, we get acknowledged for beating Spain.
Correct, yeah. So that that's that's absolutely correct. Uh, the Spanish-American War ended in eighteen ninety-eight, which does make sense because. This is the beginning, just like Perla said, the beginning and it marks the end of imperialism. The, I'm sorry, the beginning of imperialism. Excellent, excellent, guys. Wow, see, this is why we studied together. And period seven, eighteen ninety to nineteen forty-five. What are these dates? What is eighteen ninety represent? And this one I couldn't find either. No, I kinda, uh, Perla, progressivism's gonna start a little bit later in the nineteen hundreds. The closing of the frontier, Sierra, the industrialization stuff.
Yeah, but two of them go together.
Alright, yeah.
Close the frontier, but we go where now?
The closing of the frontier, the Sherman Antitrust Act is eighteen ninety-four, I think. Let me double check. Oh, you're right. It is the Sherman, wow, okay. The Sherman Antitrust Act. And what is it end, wow, hey, Perla, great job. Yeah, that's a significant event in eighteen ninety. And what's nineteen forty-five end with? What is that? Alright, T.Jest, exactly. The end of World War Two. And so we just went through all these events and it's very important that uh you're able to uh to quickly identify what period you're talking about. Because in the AP exam, there's a point. For contextual, uh contextualization. And what does that mean? Is you have to be able to talk about what happened in that period. And so if you're not really sure. What period they're talking about, it's gonna be hard. So let's give you guys a couple quick uh checks for understanding. So I'm gonna pick a couple events. And see if you guys can tell me what periods they happened in. Um, alright, here goes, the Dred Scott Decision. Alright, and Ms. Kim, let's take a couple turns if you can think of any other events where we can just kinda have them study.
Oh, okay, one, do you like that? Okay, uh.
Sorry to put you on the spot. I keep putting you on the spot.
No, I'm trying to think of something because I'm like sitting just in my bed.
Okay, I got, I got, real quick, the assassination of William McKinley. Ooh, that's a good one. It's actually period seven.
Seven.
The assassination of of William McKinley is what starts the progressive era.
With um, what's his name, Theodore Roosevelt becoming president.
Correct. Do you have any other one that you can think of?
Muckrakers.
The muckrakers. What do you guys think? Yeah?
Yeah, seven, that was a trick when I see people.
Is Daniela Estrada coming in, Jocelyn, good job, Bilal. Uh, it is period seven because that is the progressive era. How about the Lewis and Clark Expedition?
Okay, Brian.
Yeah, alright, so let's do this. Let's say on the AP exam, uh, the question is about John Brown's raid on Harper's Ferry. What period would they, would you need to be able to talk about? Five, wow, we, Ms. Kim, we have some really, really impressive students in in this uh chat. They're they're ready.
I know.
And so just the fact that if you know that John Brown's raid happened in five. In period five, you know that it's gonna be talking about um slavery, the spread of slavery, the compromises, the abolition, uh the abolitionist movement. And the Civil War. And just by being able to con- uh contextualize that, you're going to get a point. And so let's look at this real quick, the change to the rubric. And then we're gonna take some questions, but shout out to you guys. You guys did a great job. And Ms. Kim, thank you so much for joining me today. I I appreciate it. I keep putting you on the spot there. But uh, I feel like we're working like the old days. Um, alright, so this is how the scoring is going to be. Um, this is based on the AP US History uh Modified Rubric that they did. So when, how are they going to grade your score? First, you have to have a thesis. What is a thesis? Okay, Sierra, you're right. It does include a summary. How would you? Yeah, Perla, exactly. A defensible argument, Charlotte, you're right. So it is an argument. It is a statement that you are going to defend. Okay, so a thesis is not just necessarily like a summary of what's happening. Is basically your position or what idea you're going to forward. How would you uh, how do you explain that to your students, Ms. Kim?
Well, I told them that's an argument they're gonna make and they have to make, they have to address the points that they're gonna argue. Which is gonna be outline, which outlines their essay, like, so it's kind of like. I do this with, as a reader, as a grader for my students, I just read their intro, I read their thesis, and I read. Their topic sentences of their body paragraph and I read their conclusion just to get a quick understanding. And I shouldn't be saying that, but I do. Um, but your thesis is your argument and it should have the points that your body paragraphs will be arguing about. And it outlines your points.
Yeah. The unicorn point. We'll talk about that, Peter. Uh, so definitely, if you have a thesis and you have a position, that's the first way to get a point, okay? Nexus contextual. Next is contextualization, which we just talked about, which is whatever event they ask you to talk about, you have to be able to put it into a context. You can do this in your first paragraph, you can get that point in your first paragraph, or throughout your essay, you constantly gotta be able to put it throughout your essay as well. Um, and remember, if you go outside of the period, some students, like last year, I was reading some essays for the AP, and it was asking about World War II, and people started talking about the Civil Rights Movement, even though it was really good information, there's no points for that. And so, when they talk about contextualization, they're really just looking at that period. Exactly, TGS has a question, how far back should we go? Only as far as the period, as the demarcation for that period. So, if it's eighteen forty-four, going further back than that doesn't help you, okay? So, that's why those dates that we were talking about are so important, because they really give you a chance to know where, where you should focus on. Um, alright, the next part is use of two docs. So, for the use of a doc, you get one point, for the use of two docs, you get two points, effectively using a doc. What is it, well, Ms. Kim, not to put you on the spot again, but what, like, what does it mean to effectively use a doc? How do you give that point to your students?
As long, as long as they refer to it. So, for me, it's like, well, according to document, like, da-da-da-da-da, if it's a text or a picture, I'm just assuming it's a text. Um, and then, they use it as like an evidence to prove, to further prove their claim.
Yeah, exactly, I, so, to further prove their claim, I think that's how you get the point. When you use the document to support your thesis, that's how you get the points. If you just describe the document and go over it and summarize it, you don't get a point. And I've seen some students that like, oh, they're almost there, they're almost about to make that leap to their claim, and they never quite do it, and you can't give them a point in the AP. So, make sure you connect it to your thesis, the use of the documents. And finally, there's two more points there, so you get two points for using the documents. So, a point for each document that you use, and you get a point for each piece of additional historical evidence that you use, which is possible to get two points. So, the evidence of using two documents and bringing in your own evidence is a total of four points. And to be honest, I was reading some things about Tom Ritchie was publishing, I think just with six points, you will pass the AP exam. So, yeah, Perla, you know Ritchie, Ritchie is a great guy. Uh, he's definitely a tremendous help to all AP students and to teachers. And he predicted that with the six should be a passing score, and I think that would be enough as well. But, just to make sure, let's go over the analyze and reasoning. It explains how or why the document's viewpoint, purpose, and historical simulation or audience is relevant to the argument. So, again, this is tied back to the documents. In time, uh how you're not only using the document, but why is it relevant to the claim that you're making? And then, Peter talked about that unicorn point, that elusive five is really this point called complex reasoning, and they only give that out to students that are scoring a five. And so, I do think this year that a six is a passing score. And so, if you want to practice, if you want to practice, I'm gonna see if we can hold a practice session here on Fivable. If you want to practice an essay, we can grade them and give you guys some feedback on that. So, for the second piece of historical evidence, what kind of info can be used? It's the same, it just has to be two separate pieces of historical evidence. So, for example, if you're talking about manifest destiny, what could be two pieces of evidence that you could use for that? The Oregon Trail? Yeah? Mexican-American War, the Transcontinental Railroad? Uh, yeah, yeah, the connection of, 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 of West and East. You can talk about the Trail of Tears, the removement of the Native American tribes, all those things would be two separate examples. So, it wouldn't be enough just to talk about the Mexican-American War in huge debt, that's one point. You'd have to bring another historical piece of evidence to support your answer. So, that's what they mean. And the last thing before we start taking your questions, why am I going over the rubric? Because this is important to know how it's gonna be scored. So, you're not guessing of what the AP is looking for. It's looking that you have a thesis, that you're contextualizing your essay, that you know which period you're talking about, that you're using evidence and the two documents, and that you're explaining the documents, the point, the purpose, and why is it relevant to your argument. And that's pretty much how you're going to pass this AP. Angela has a question, is it two points for using four docs? No, uh, right now, the minimum is two documents that they're asking you to use, which is actually pretty, pretty good, right, Ms. Kim, what do you think?
Yeah, compared to like using, like, what, five or six, I think.
Yeah, I mean.
Pretty good.
I think the AP College Board, they know that it's gonna be tough for some students, and so, they have altered their expectations, and so, this is really uh, a test that I think is gonna have a big passing rate this year. Alright, and so, before we jump into the questions, remember if you have a question, go to Ask Questions.
No, just because you use more documents doesn't mean you get a five.
Yeah, okay, that's a great question. Ms. Kim, can you answer that question real quick while I do one thing?
Yeah, just because you use all the documents doesn't mean you get the five, because if you look at the rubric where they tell you like it's, you know, how many points you would get, the maximum point you would get is four, but it wouldn't be for, oh, this student just referred to four documents, or they get all four points. No, it's, you get two points for that, and then you get two points for bringing in other historical evidence or examples into your body paragraphs.
And Ms. Kim, real quick, while I'm looking for something, because I want to make sure I get the best answer for that, can you talk about these tips for passing?
Hmm, well, I'm gonna refer to the rubric a lot, guys. Um, as Mr. Poole Garen is going over the rubric, do pay attention, because as long as you do what the rubric is asking and you hit that mark, I know it's not the best way to write an essay, but if you're doing what the rubric is telling you, and you're getting those points, that is how you're gonna pass the test. Um, it's, it doesn't, I mean, a good writer can go in and write a beautiful essay with perfect, you know, grammar, and it's flowing beautiful, but if they don't do what the rubric has, they may lose points and not get, and not get the passing score, right? But if you're doing what the rubric is telling you, like you're referring to two documents, you're putting in more historical, like, examples and evidence per body paragraph, you know, you have your thesis, you're contextualizing, you're doing all what it tells you to, and you're getting those points, and you will pass. Um, so how do you analyze? Okay, let's go back.
I'm looking for the rubric that the AP released, that's why I want to share with them.
Yeah, how do you analyze your evidence? Well, um, TGS, if I'm pronouncing your name right, it could be either using soaps, or hips, or hippie, whatever your teacher will use, but usually, you should be analyzing it, where you're looking for um who the audience is, what is the purpose? What's the message, right? What is the author trying to say? Things like that, you want to look at it, um.
Yeah. So, yes, I don't know if your teacher has, guys, I'm gonna, right below us, I just put the rubric there. Uh, that is the College Board rubric that goes into a little bit more detail what we're talking about. Remember that they modified it, so there's this little green boxes in that rubric that tells you what changes were made, okay? Uh, because they just took their old rubric and adapted it to this new situation. So, Justine, the analysis is mainly to argue your thesis, correct? Yeah, the analysis is, to put it, is to put the documents in support of your thesis. How can you get the evidence to support your thesis? And you should, yeah, definitely, the significance of the events, you can still argue, it all depends on the prompt. So, there isn't a clear-cut answer for that, but the main idea is always to use the evidence to go back to your claim. Victor, do you still suggest we write a five-paragraph essay? Since they're asking you for two documents, I think this will probably be four-paragraph essays. Uh, you would have your first paragraph. Ah, sorry, Perla, is it choppy, guys? Can you let me know if it's choppy?
Uh, mine's clear, clear.
Okay, can you hear me, Ms. Kim?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, Peter, perfect. Um, so.
Well, it depends on the prompts, Kim, Victor, so, I don't know.
What is SEP?
So, usually, I tell my students when they're writing their LEQ or DBQ, think, when, given the last couple of prompts, I tell them to think of the social and economic and political factors. So, I use the SEP as like an acronym for my class, and I have them address it quickly before they go into their essay.
I think that that's still a strategy that will work, I think. Um, it all depends, you know, how, what kind of prompt it is.
Yeah.
You ready? And, guys, what we can do is, I'll definitely try to do some practice questions. Uh, I'm gonna have a couple more study sessions like this, and then we'll have some practice questions that, you know, we can see how everybody's doing. So, you're not, the first time you're sitting down isn't for the AP exam, okay? Um, alright, so, I want to tell you guys, before we move on here, practice. Take practice questions, time yourself. Because if the first time you're sitting down for a forty-five-minute DBQ is the day of the exam, you're setting yourself up for failure. Uh, when I was a teacher, I teach in AP US History, I used to do three practice exams a year on a Saturday. And I really felt like that was one of the big reasons why my students really started passing the AP. That was a big difference, that I didn't do my first couple of years, and then, when students got to practice, it really, really helped them. Uh, this, this suggestion also came from Tom Ritchie, to practice typing. Where are you gonna type your essay? If you're gonna handwrite and take a picture, then make sure, you know, you're ready to do that. If you're gonna write it on a computer, they're even accepting it on a cellphone. But I don't know if I can write an essay on a cellphone, so, you know, practice. Whatever method you're gonna use, practice using that method. Finally, understand how the scoring will work, just like Ms. Kim said. Understand that rubric that we shared, that I just shared right below that, so you know that, what to focus on. Ah, Peter, we brought up some negative stuff about AP World here. And study, don't get overconfident, just because it's open book, open notes, doesn't mean that, oh, I'm not gonna study for this. Study, you need to know the periods, you need to feel confident about what you're gonna do. Because if you put it off, I promise you, it's gonna be hard to pass.
Can I just say, sorry, can I just say something here for the students? Um, you know how Mr. Poole Garen just did a quick review per each period, told you, hey, like, write down what you think is important uh from that time period? What you guys should do is not, there's no way that you're gonna be able to utilize your textbooks and stuff on the test, because it's so timed, it's only forty-five minutes. You can create yourself a cheat sheet, like a set of notes, for each page, put like the period with the dates, and then write the important stuff down, like he said, onto there for yourself to use as a reference for the exam, because you don't know what the exam's gonna be about, but just have that available, so you can quickly refer to it and like focus on your writing. Um, I think it's a great way to study.
Yeah, alright, so, Ms. Kim, we're gonna take some questions. And again, guys, by no means do I pretend to know everything about everything, so if there's a question that we don't know, uh, we'll look it up together, okay? And I'm gonna be sharing a resource with you guys, it's a study guide. Um, remember, though, the study guide I have covers periods one through nine, you only need to focus on periods three to seven. Yes, Jocelyn, that's a great question, to include those key terms, those words like manifest destiny, the gold rush, the Mexican-American War, those are the things that get you points. Uh, because when we grade the AP, you actually have a list of terms that if kids use them, if students use them, sorry, kids, uh, if students use them, uh, that they get awarded points. So, using all the vocab is a great, great way. Alright, so, Ms. Kim, um, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question, and then we can both answer it, does that sound okay? And guys, if you have a question, please put it there, uh, in the Ask Questions there. Okay, is a conclusion or post contextualization required? This question comes from Angela. What do you think, Ms. Kim? A conclusion and post contextualization?
I think that'd be good to refer into your body paragraph, um, I mean, body paragraph, your conclusion paragraph in your essay. Um, like a sentence or two, I mean, you don't have to, but I think it's a great way to do it, because it wraps up your essay great, but that's just me, I am somebody who looks for that.
Yeah, I actually think that writing a conclusion is a really, really good idea. Um, because it brings the essay together for your reader, and it's your last chance there to really drive home the fact of your thesis. And so, I would recommend that you do do a conclusion for this essay. Um, does it necessarily mean it's gonna be the difference between pass or fail? No, uh, but I think it's just a good practice. So, that's a great question there. Hey, guys, if you have any questions, where's the study guide? Ooh, there, alright, alright, I'm gonna share the study guide real quick. Ms. Kim, let me ask you a different question while I'm posting the study guide, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, would connecting to current events show sophistication or count as historical evidence? And that question is from Perla.
Perla, I would not count it as outside historical evidence, but connecting to current events show sophistication in your conclusion. It's a great way to synthesize to what you learned, I mean, what you're talking about, but also making reference to um current times, it's really great as a reader to get that. I think it's refreshing, and it also wraps up your essay really strongly. Uh, but again, that's like something that I expect my students to do, like, when they're given an essay to take home and do, but I don't really expect that during a timed essay, um, if you're able to do it, go for it. But again, like, yeah, that's another high level of writing skills to do in a forty-five-minute period.
I would say, don't, because that's, remember, let's go back to the rubric, and nowhere in the rubric um is there a, a, a point for connecting it to current events. So, really, if you do show that, like Ms. Kim said, you are showing sophistication, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you're getting a point, okay? And so, let's focus on what gets us points, that's, that should be our focus. Where, how are these things gonna, how is this thing gonna be graded, so you can pass it and you can get college credit? Uh, Kobe has a question, do you think there will be another progressive movement? And will it happen in US history? Oh, this is a great question, this is the kind of questions that really gets you thinking. So, what do you think, so, Ms. Kim, do you think there's gonna be another progressive movement, like another muckraker?
I think there will be, there is stuff going on this year and last year. If you look at the journalists, a lot of them are really unhappy with what's been going on with the COVID-nineteen situation. And there's a lot of misinformation presented, and the media, and a lot of journalists are trying to like, get the truth and find the truth. And I see a lot of people that are currently happier and happy, and I just want to be careful, because some people will have different political views or religious views on here, on this platform. Um, I'm not trying to take a stand here, but I'm saying like with the issues that are going on, there are a lot of movements to try and improve the situation that everyone's in, because this, it's so unique, like staying at home, and people are still trying to go and vote, and things like that.
Yeah, and I do think that, I mean, Bernie Sanders is kind of, uh.
He dropped out.
Yeah, he's, he's kind of trying to lead a next progressive movement to change things fundamentally, to fix things up. Uh, but it'll be interesting, I mean, I do think that, like Ms. Kim pointed out, the journalism is a big factor. You have journalists that are exposing all these things happening, so that's similar to the first progressive movement. Uh, you have a lot of industries that are broken, like healthcare. Uh, back then, you had the meat, the meat factories and the abuse of labor. Um, and so, those comparisons are actually really helpful, Kobe, so that's a great question. Uh, so, the question is, wait, so it's now Biden versus Trump? Uh, I don't think Bernie Sanders has dropped out.
He did, he just dropped out, he announced in about thirty, forty, no, well, it's been like fifty minutes now.
Whoa, you're breaking news on this speed, because I didn't know that. And Ms. Kim is correct, Bernie Sanders is this top trending story, Bernie Sanders ends his presidential campaign. And so, now, it's going to be a very interesting reshuffling. Because what happens is, in order to get some of those voters that Bernie, the progressive voters that Bernie had, uh, it's going to force Joe Biden to become a little bit more progressive in order to get those votes. And so, it's gonna be an interesting couple of minutes, or a couple of days, I guess. Um, yeah. Upton Sinclair and the meatpacking industry, correct? So, if we're talking about Upton Sinclair, uh, does anybody remember the name of that book? The Jungle, TGS is on fire here, alright, The Jungle.
Don't say The Jungle Book, The Jungle Book is another book, so just stick with The Jungle, because The Jungle Book is another book for imperialism.
Yeah, yeah, no, perfect, so let's look at some other questions. Yeah, yeah, no, perfect. So let's look at some other questions. We've got about eight more minutes, guys. And Ms. Kim, I wanna thank you so much for joining me. I'm telling you, this is the fastest stream I've ever had because it's like.
Bro Sanders reminds me of William Jennings Bryan.
Oh, yes, that's a good, that's, that's it. All you have to remember about William Jennings Bryan is that he lost everything, every election, he lost in the, well, he did win in the Scopes Trial. Oh, so that's a question, the Scopes Trial. Who's that? See if anybody remembers that. Because that is something, all right. Seagate, Segev is about evolution. Remember, this was a religious tolerance event uh, during the nineteen twenties about evolution being taught in schools. And so if you know, if you go back to this, this would be period seven. And so the moment, if you have a question on, uh, the, if you have a question about the Scopes Trial, you would be able to put it into the context of nineteen twenty and that's how you get those points, okay? Uh, the contextualization of the nineteen twenties is what would get you the points there. And who knows, I think that, I mean, I don't wanna make any predictions because this is being recorded, but I think the Scopes Trials, uh, seems like something that could be asked in the AP this year. I haven't seen that, anything on the Scopes Trial for a while. Ooh, I lost Ms. Kim. I'm gonna bring Ms. Kim back. Um, all right, so let's look at a couple more questions. We have a question. Uh, Perla, you had a question, what do we need in order to fit the requirements for accommodations? Uh, so basically, if you have, uh, an IEP or you have any kind of learning disability or, uh, or any challenge, uh, then then the AP adjusts for that. Um, I had a student that she had some visual impairments. And it was, uh, she was my AP student and it was really hard for her to, uh, to read small texts. And so one of the accommodations is that the AP, uh, gave her more time to read it and they, uh, sent her a bigger exam. So she could do that. So basically, it's just an adjustment that they do. Kobe, did minorities other than Japanese-American face discrimination in World War II? Oh, that's a great question. And let me bring Ms. Kim back here. Ms. Kim, I'm gonna bring you back. I lost you there. Yes, oh, your phone died, you're on your phone. Okay, Ms. Kim, I, I sent you a, uh, an invitation here. We have a question from Kobe. Yes, so, uh, the Japanese did face discrimination after World War II, and, and Segev brings it up, so did African-Americans. Uh, African-Americans who fought during World War II were fighting something called the Double a Double, uh, B Campaign. Does anybody know what the Double B Campaign is? All right, so the Double B Campaign is that African-Americans were fighting to win the war abroad and to win the war against discrimination at home. Exactly, and so, so, nah, Perla, I didn't get your joke there. It's all right, my jokes never get, uh, any laughs either, so don't feel bad. Um, and so did Mexican-Americans also face discrimination. So just make sure you look that up. Oh, Perla, I see, good. Good job, Perla. Get all your jokes out so you can be serious in the, in the AP exam. All right. Ms. Kim, I sent you an invitation, let me know if you didn't get it, um, because you, you should be coming back on the stream. All right, we got about three more minutes. And Kobe, I, uh, we answered your question there. Uh, can we, oh, here goes from Angela, can we use period one and two for contextualization if the prompt was about period three? The short answer is no for that. Um, I would avoid doing that because when they give you, they, because the AP, they specifically put period three and seven. And so that your safe bet is to stick to the period, uh, that they, the prompt is in. That's your best bet to get that contextualization point. So that is a good, uh, question there. Why is the GI Bill so underrated? I don't think it's underrated. Um, I think, what do you mean by underrated, uh, Kobe? No, Perla, perfect. That would be a perfect example if you talk about the election of eighteen hundred, uh, because remember that is period three. Period three is, starts with the election of eighteen hundred. So let's look at, oh my God, sorry, guys, accidentally clicked on something, uh. Ms. Kim, I'm gonna send you an invitation again, sorry. Wanna make sure I, I get to say thanks to Ms. Kim for coming on here. All right, I sent you the invitation again. Um, so let's look at period three, uh, the, the election of eighteen hundred is still within, uh, period three. So that would be, that would be perfect. Yeah, Kobe, that is act, act, actually very important. Um, the GI Bill though is gonna come after nineteen forty-five. So I don't think it's going to be on the test. And so I wouldn't recommend, uh, you know, uh, bringing that in. The GI Bill comes after World War II. But you're right, it was a great equalizer for the, for the common man to go to college and to buy a house. All right, guys, I seems like I can't get Ms. Kim back in here. Uh, but I wanted to just say thank you guys so much for joining me, uh, today and for joining Ms. Kim. Uh, you guys are honestly amazing that you guys are taking the time to connect, that you guys are finding resources. I truly, uh, I put the study guide at the bottom, so you guys can get that study guide. Charlotte, Sierra, Daniela Estrada, Little Estrada, Kobe, you guys have been amazing. Uh, Mireda, thank you. Uh, Ms. Kim, I wanna thank you, Victor, thank you. I wanna thank you so much. Uh, for, Ms. Kim, thank you so much for coming on to the stream and for connecting with us. Uh, I truly appreciate you. I'm gonna let you guys know when the next stream is, um, and so we can continue to connect. We have one month until the AP. And I promise you that if you're on this stream, you're worlds ahead of everybody else. Uh, so I think you are going to be fine. I think now it's not a question of whether or not you're gonna pass. I think it's a question of, are you gonna get a three, a four or a five? And that's what we're doing here, uh, trying to get everybody to do a five. Um, and Joshua memes, hey, hey, man, I miss you, man. All right, guys, thank you, guys. Have a great day and remember to check Fivable and follow us on, on, follow us on, uh, social media. If you need to hit me up for anything, my email is, uh, wpugarin@gmail.com. If you wanna follow me on Twitter, uh, I have at wpugarin1 or wpugarin. And I wanna thank you guys and have a great day, guys. Bye, everybody.